It's all good. Okay, so Chris, if you would just start to start us off, why don't you just tell us a little bit about your background? And what experiences you bring to the table that you think would lend themselves to the role of a city council member? And and why you're jumping into the race?
Okay, well, I guess, I guess first and foremost, I'm a father, um, you know, I'm a long time Dubuqueer. I'm kind of originally from a smaller area of Wisconsin, Belmont, Wisconsin. I don't know if maybe you've heard of it. Uh, my grandparents had a restaurant outside of Belmont in between Cuba City there called Red Supper Club. Um, so I grew up around the restaurant industry and my mother and other grandmother worked at Pimbers in Platteville. And so that was kind of a big, uh, I don't know, influence in my life. We moved to Dubuque, I think, when I was in the fifth grade. Um, you know, I'm probably best known with Copper Kettle, the success there on the the north end. You know, uh, I think people were pretty amazed that, uh, you know, we came in there and did what we did. People have kind of accredited me to breathe in some new life into that end of town. Um, see, me and my significant other Erin, we have four kids, we're we're kind of raising together fifteen to eight years old. Let's see, a lot of people don't know, I had another company that kind of ran since I was nineteen years old. It was a paintless dent repair company where, uh, went all over the country partnering up with body shops, dealerships, or independent locations after like a big catastrophe type storm hailstorm. And, you know, we'd partner up with these different businesses and take care of the cars because there wasn't enough technicians locally to do it. Um, and that really took me all over the world. I went Germany, Italy, Switzerland, Spain, France, fixing cars basically, uh, and, you know, working with different companies. Um, you know, I started out pretty early on on my own, uh, probably thirteen, fourteen years old, shining shoes all down Central Avenue. Uh, so, yeah, um, you know, I've I've been kind of an entrepreneur my whole life, artist in many ways. Uh, do some metal fabrication work. Um, I don't know if you're familiar with like First and Main, I I made their sign and all the railings, uh, several railings throughout town, you know, most of the work down at the Copper Kettle I I did myself. I have a, you know, a few rental apartments and commercial property. So, um, yeah, I've had a lot of involvement with the city, you know, over the last twenty-five years. Between the the rentals and the restaurant, obviously. Um, so, yeah, kind of humble beginnings. Dubuque's been really, really good to me. Um, you know, I love Dubuque, I, you know, I could have lived anywhere and, you know, and this is home. Yeah, I think part of it is to set a good example for my children. You know, I think it's, uh, you know, you have a responsibility to to give back. You know, in particular, if if you're not, uh, you know, my code is if if you don't like the way things are, you you should do something about it. So, you know, I think, uh, there's some things I'm not happy with, uh, or not that I'm not happy with, I think they could be better. Um, and, you know, I think my experience would, uh, in in the things I've done will kind of lend to that.
Okay, and I know your your business is in the north end. Do you live in that area as well, or what ward are you living in?
No, I live up off of Fremont, so I'd be in First Ward.
Okay, I was gonna ask about why why running for the at-large seat versus another one. Um, I don't know if maybe there were just more people in that one already, but.
Well, I thought I, you know, uh, because of my business and and, you know, uh, would have probably, well, I I really, nobody was running against Rick and, uh, I I thought it made sense. You know, sometimes I feel like, um, you know, kind of life lays it out for you. You know, there was, I think, good people that were already running in the the other in my in Ward Three, so it just seemed to make sense to me.
Mm-hmm. So, so with, uh, with your race, uh, with Ward One, we we know that there will be a new face there, uh, with Susan Farber stepping back, um, and, you know, challenges, a challenge in in Ward Three as well. Um, do you, uh, you know, so we could potentially see a differently and the mayor's mayor's seat as well, potentially see a a different makeup of the council or at at least assured some some different, uh, at least one different face. What, how do you think that might, uh, benefit the city or the 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 community and and the the leadership? Um, to to see a different makeup there? What do you, what would you like to see?
Well, I think that'd be great. I mean, I think, uh, especially from my point of view, coming in as somebody new, um, I think it'd be great to to have, you know, other folks that are, you know, also coming in new, uh, challenging, um, you know, kind of the way things are already going.
What kinds of things would you like to see changed?
Some, I mean, kind of a variety of things. I think, uh, really just the the way the city interacts with with people, you know? I think in a lot of ways, the city has lost sight of who it serves. Um, you know, I've I've had many personal experiences where the city kind of brushes you off or talks down to you. Um, I think, uh, I think I want to put the residents back in the center spotlight there, treat them like, you know, I try to treat my customers. Um, you know, I've also had a lot of contact with city staff throughout the years and I think the same thing. I think, um, you know, the staff needs to be more empowered and I think treated with a little bit more, uh, respect. I mean, to me, it's almost disrespectful than the number of consultants they run through there and not not turn to their own staff and say, you know, what do we need, what do we need you to fix this? I think that would save a ton of money. I mean, just common sense. Uh, you know, that's kind of how I try to run my businesses, you know, find find the good people, competent people. Um, like, you know, she was saying down at Farmer's Market, you know, that kid's been with me since he's fifteen years old, incredible work ethic. You know, doesn't find solutions, you know, uh, but he's also empowered, you know? If if, uh, he needs to make a decision, he knows he he has the ability to do that. And if he feels like, you know, um, he wants some input or he's not sure, uh, then we have a discussion. But at the end of the day, he knows, uh, I've got his back and, you know, that's empowering. And, you know, I think that we have a lot of people like that in the city that we could turn to. And again, you know, at the end of the day, cut a lot of costs. Use that money in in other places.
Yeah, let's talk more about that. Where where do you think the worth spending has gone gone the wrong direction? Um, where's the city spending money that they shouldn't be? And where would you like to see city, more city money going?
Well, I think, just getting back to basics, you know, um, streets, gutters, uh, curb, um, sewer, obviously, is a big one. Um, yeah, just getting back to to the basics, uh, you know, supporting our first responders in a proper way. You know, I went through their facilities there on nine eleven, they had kind of a meet and greet for the anniversary of the catastrophe there in New York. Um, and, you know, I really expected to to walk into state-of-the-art facility. You know, you see the trucks rolling around and you're like, oh, my gosh, those things are impressive. And it was not impressive, to say the least. It was it was disrespectful in a lot of ways. I mean, uh, paint flaking off the walls, uh, yeah, it's just, uh, you know, the type of living conditions that they certainly wouldn't allow in an apartment, let's put it that way. So they don't live up to their own standards. That's that's a, that's a problem.
So, Chris, when you say the type of living conditions that you wouldn't allow in an apartment, can you expand on that a little bit?
Sure, you know, just just right there, you know, flaking, uh, paint on a wall, you can't have that in an apartment. Open stair rails, you can't have that in an apartment. Um, you know, rusty bathroom stall doors, you can't have that in an apartment, you know, these are, uh.
And that was what you saw in the fire station?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. Um, I was appalled. Um, and, yeah, I mean, to 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 hold the residents to a different standards is doesn't make sense to me. Um, and to, you know, and it's, you know, we're we're trying to recruit young firefighters and this is where you're gonna live? I mean, common sense, like, nobody would want to live there. I mean, here here's a real good example. So at the at the, um, main station there, they have, I think, ten or twelve people typically, you know, doing a swing shift, coming and going, um, because, you know, they're twenty-four hours. They have, have you seen those washer and dryers that are like a washer and a dryer? So you can only do one or the other at once? Um, they had one of those for twelve people. Um, the the hangout room was like cinder block with, um, they told me the chairs came from when they remodeled the library. Holes in them, grease all over them. I mean, and and this isn't like huge expensive stuff. This is, again, what I kept thinking is how disrespectful, how, you know, how, yeah, how discouraging for for a young person, you know, to even think about joining up on that, you know? Uh, one of the guys, you know, obviously, I'm not gonna mention any names, was telling me at one point, uh, because I asked about the walls and the paint. He said, you know, not the current, uh, chief, but I think a an earlier one, you know, encouraged them to go buy some paint and rollers. It's like, what? Like, you're a professional firefighter and they're asking you, like, if he, if I'm gonna paint some walls, how about I paint my own walls? You know?
Mm-hmm.
So, yeah, I mean, I mean, that that's a top-down problem to me. That's, you know, that says a lot to me. I don't know what you guys think.
Mm-hmm.
Well, when you say top-down, are you referring to fire chief down or city manager down or?
Well, I think, um, yeah, I mean, ultimately, uh, you know, the the city manager works for the city council. So it's the city council down in a lot of ways. I mean, they're the ones that need to hold them accountable, in my mind. Uh, you know, they, the city manager works for the city council, I believe. That's the way it's supposed to work.
Mm-hmm.
So, um, you know, I saw other city council members there. Uh, current ones. So it's not like they don't know what it looks like.
Any, uh, any other areas, Chris, that you think they should be, um, spending more? And then maybe one or two examples where you think they should be spending less?
Well, you know, I I feel like the city staff just keeps expanding. Um, so, you know, I think, you know, like I said, I've 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 known a lot of the city staff throughout the years and very competent people. Um, and, you know, in the last few years, I'd say I've run into some people that aren't so competent. And, you know, that probably shouldn't have been put in the position they're in. And I feel like then they just hire more to to try to get the job done. Um, you know, it's, I I think there's some overlap there for sure. Um, you know, uh, when, uh, so across the street from the Copper Kettle, there's the old limestone, uh, curbing. You know, I I called about that and they, um, said, well, it's not in the budget, you know, we've spent all the money. There's, uh, an intersection down Thirty Second Street, s- same thing, five years now. You know, there's, uh, big gaps in the the curbing and, oh, we're gonna get to it, you know, it's not in the budget. But but at the same time, we have money for, you know, uh, well, let's use the airport, for example. You know, there's at least gonna be one point six, I'm sure, but it'll be more than that. Um, and to me, you know, everybody keeps asking, do you support that? It's like, okay, I I see a lot of challenges there that they need to overcome, but I I certainly don't support spending that money when we have our first responders living the way they're living or understaffed or curbs that need to be fixed or sewers that need to be fixed. Um, I think their priorities are 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 messed up, they're they're backwards. You know, the the airport, you know, potentially would be good for a large business, okay? You know, um, we don't have a large business that demands it clearly, or we would be at eighty percent capacity. And the idea that we're gonna subsidize it till we get a big business in here, you know, is not realistic. Uh, the challenges for the airport alone are are enough to to hold it back, you know? Uh, you, you know, being in the restaurant industry, you know, it's like, you know, we're open seven days a week, uh, lunch and dinner, you know? Uh, open all but two days a year, you know, like a city, we're open all the time. So there's there's challenges in that 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 other people don't think about. Um, you know, and a and a a big part of that is staying ahead of of problems. And I feel like, you know, they haven't done a real good job of staying ahead of problems. And again, I, you know, when I talk to the staff out in the streets, they get it. I mean, they're literally saying that, like, they're confused half the time on on why they're fixing what they're fixing. Because they know it'd be better to to replace it and just bite the bullet.
And, Chris, did I hear you say that there are other problems out at the airport?
Well, yeah, I mean, well, there's other challenges that I don't think you're gonna overcome and and especially in a three-month gap. And and to to spend that kind of money, taxpayer money, on a bet like that seems foolish. Um, you know, uh, I I think people have just gotten, uh, you, I mean, people are gonna take the value in driving an hour and twenty minutes to Moline. Um, the other challenge is, you know, you got basically one or two flights coming in, uh, well, one going out, one coming in. If you miss the flight, which happens all the time, if you fly at all, you know that. Um, now what? You're 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 gonna be stuck till the next day. Well, most people, well, I have a blended family, it's not like I can just, uh, not show up one for a day, you know, or we're on a schedule or I've got, you know, I've got to be at work. So normally, uh, on a on a vacation scenario, you know, you have to, you know, you're you're gotta be to work the next day. So it's it's a it's a challenge. So if you do have to take another flight to get back, then you're gonna end up in, you know, where your car isn't there anymore. Um, so, see what I'm getting at there? Uh, so it's it's the, uh, the limited number of flights is an issue that's, you know, the cost. I mean, sometimes, uh, you know, I've spot checked the pricing just to kind of confirm it. It's two, three, four hundred dollars difference per ticket. I mean, you know, who in their right mind wouldn't drive an hour and twenty minutes to take care of that? You know, roads are better, cars are better. I mean, if they're they're comparing it to historical data from, you know, back when things were totally different. Cars were different, uh, you know, you have GPS takes you right to the airport, you're gonna have to think about it. And then, I mean, never mind the fact that, let's say, ten years from now, uh, you know, or maybe a little more, you're gonna have, you know, autonomous driving vehicles, you can sit back and it'll drive you right there. I I mean, I just, I just think it has a lot of challenges that are aren't gonna be overcome in in the time period. And and I don't, I don't see the demand. Um, and, yeah, you given all those challenges to to bet, you know, taxpayer money like that seems seems like a foolish bet. I I wouldn't bet my own money, why would I bet somebody else's?
Hmm. And, um, I'd be curious to hear a little bit about your perspective. You were obviously right in the, uh, the fallout zone for the, uh, the brewing and malting building and the years of disrepair, uh, in in your neighborhood down there. So you can talk a little bit about that and the city's handling of that?
Sure, you know, um, you know, I obviously love that building. Um, so I'm gonna be biased in in saving it. Um, you know, I don't know if you know what my, the Copper Kettle logo has essentially the 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 skyline of that brewery in it. Um, and and I'm I'm really into history and and so for a lot of reasons, I I just love that building. As a piece of architecture, I think it's one of the most important buildings in Iowa, maybe, you know? And there's a twin to that building and Grain Belt up in Minnesota that, you know, i- is a huge draw for people to go see. Um, so, you know, I I think a roof, you know, twenty years ago would have been a lifeline, you know, and but, you know, that didn't happen and it's not, you know, I know many, many people that were contacting the city relentlessly to tell them, you know, that thing needs a roof or it's going to collapse. And it did. Um, and then we found an investor to come into town. And I think, uh, if I had to guess, he he came under the impression that the city was gonna, you know, pull out all the stops and help them save it. And I don't know what happened. I mean, it's, obviously, things went sideways. Um, and, you know, now now we lost half the building, which, you know, maybe it could have never been saved, you know? I don't know. Um, but I do know, uh, the guy obviously came in here with the intentions to save it and somehow got on the bad side of the city. And, you know, uh, it it it's where it's at now is for sale. And, you know, with with the history of the bad press it's gotten, I can't imagine anybody buying it. I don't know. Um, you know, the way they they blocked off the the road, you know, wasn't ideal, obviously. I mean, that's that's not why I'm running. Um, you know, it's not, uh, me mad at the city over that or anything like that. You know, in fact, um, they they were more helpful than they've ever been, uh, with me putting in that parking lot. So in a lot of ways, it was a silver lining for me, you know? But, uh, it does make me sad that it it ended up the way it did. And and, yeah, if anything, I would say, you know, a small investment in a roof would have saved it twenty years ago. But, you know, that that's kind of not either here nor there at this point. You know, but again, that kind of goes back to that, you know, uh, my philosophy in the restaurant, you know, being kind of twenty-four-seven type of scenario. I mean, it's not twenty-four-seven, but, you know, it's like, uh, that old saying, an ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure. You know, the streets, the 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 curbs, all that stuff. It's not sexy, it's not, you know, fun, it's not, you know, uh, uh, newsworthy, but it keeps it everything moving and it protects your investment.
Chris, are you suggesting that the city should have put a roof on the brewery building?
Twenty years ago? Am I suggesting they should have done that twenty years ago?
Yeah.
But I'm suggesting that they should have, uh, either made the current owner do it or stepped in and done it. Yeah, I think so. I don't think it would have been a bad investment.
I I've got a question. Um, so one of the, uh, one of the the things that has sort of come into play in the last couple of months is Mike Van Milligan announcing that he's planning to retire in the next, uh, next couple of years. Um, and so the folks that we elect now are gonna be, uh, sort of the folks who are in in the, you know, determining who our next city manager is gonna be, what what they're gonna be like. Um, I'm curious about from your perspective, what, uh, you would be looking for in in a new city manager, both from just sort of a, you know, job competence, these perspectives, but also, um, you know, what kind of tone you want that person to to set for the city? Should they be, you know, continuing on sort of some of the current trajectory you've got? Should they be going in a different direction? What what do you want to see in that next person?
Well, I think that next person should, you know, empower the staff. I think they should, you know, uh, open the communication between the city council and the and the staff, you know? From my understanding, uh, the current city council is discouraged, if not forbidden, to to talk to to directors, um, and vice versa. So, I mean, that that seems like a big misstep to me. Why why would we need a to pay, uh, somebody else to come in and and tell us what's wrong in those departments when when you could talk directly to the to the people that probably know them best? Um, you know, these consultants don't know Dubuque like Dubuqueers do, especially people that are, uh, been in those. I mean, some of those folks have been in there for a long time. I mean, a lot of them have retired out or or found work elsewhere, I feel like. But, uh, you know, I I think that would be, uh, something I would I would want to somebody that that sees the value and, you know, communication and, you know, I I guess transparency. Um, yeah, I think, uh, that that would be, I think, a a great place to start.
Sure. And what what, as far as that person's kind of, you know, vision, what do you think? Do you think that they should be kind of continuing on on the sort of current path that you see? Are there the ways that you think that the path of the city should be be changed? Obviously, we've talked a little bit about some of the budget priorities and and things like that, but.
Um, let's see, you know, uh, one thing I've talked about a little bit in the past is, you know, when I opened the Copper Kettle, it was it was challenging. But and and that was always kind of my dream to to open a restaurant, you know, kind of, uh, uh, walking the the shoes of my grandmother and, you know, it's kind of in the blood, you might say. Um, took a while to get there, but I got there. Um, I feel like today, that would be next to impossible for an entrepreneur to take an old restaurant like that, rehab it, reinvent it and and open the doors, you know? The the cost barrier they've they've put by kind of moving the goalposts every time you take on a project, it's like they tack on, you know, they look at it as an opportunity to make you do, you know, you can't make one improvement without making twenty. So it just, it makes it impossible for a small business to to get a startup going. Um, you know, so when I look down that central corridor, I mean, that's gonna be, I mean, half those storefronts are empty. So, uh, you know, how does somebody start up a, because those are gonna be tough businesses to start anyhow, you know? Um, so, uh, if you don't have a a city that's encouraging and, uh, you know, trying to trying to find a way to make it happen with you, um, instead of, you know, leaving it all in your hands or or creating new challenges for you without any solutions, you know, that that's gonna be a tough nut to crack. And and, you know, I think business, small businesses like that, you you know, kind of like what the Copper Kettle did in the north end. You know, they breathe, they breathe life into those areas, they become kind of hubs for folks. And, um, you know, they provide, obviously, a a a service, otherwise, you know, they don't stay in business.
Chris, you used a, uh, example or analogy of using moving goalposts or, um, making one improvement and or wanting to make one improvement, needing to make twenty. Do you have some examples of that?
Yeah, I mean, really, an any time, um, you do any kind of remodel, um, you know, that leads, that leads to whatever the next thing is, you know, you you can't just, um, fix the bad plumbing, well, you open up the wall, now we can see the wiring, you gotta, you gotta replace that. Um, it's that sort of thing. Um, you know, uh, you know, if you if you put in this, uh, I'm trying to think of another analogy off the top of my head or another example. Um, you know, if you if you do the parking lot, then you have to replace all the sidewalks, you know? Well, the sidewalks are the same sidewalks that were there. Well, now now they need to be new, okay? Uh, you know, and sometimes they allow you to, um, fix just different areas, but you have to push back to get there, you know, and they're they're not trying to find solutions for you, for sure. You know, you you have to be really resourceful on your own and and very, um, I don't know, relentless. Where, you know, in in my, in my eyes, it should be the opposite. They should be, you know, coming up with solutions for for young entrepreneurs that are, you know, uh, putting everything on the line like that. Because ultimately, you know, again, that's gonna grow our tax base, I mean, it's good for everyone. But, you know, it's it seems like the small business owners are, you know, inconvenient in some ways.
What what do you think about the efforts the city has made in in recent months and in the last couple of years, actually, uh, to to create more housing and and address housing issues in the city, uh, and and particularly affordable housing or and or apartment, um, multifamily dwelling?
Well, you know, I'm not convinced there's a housing shortage. I mean, our population hasn't really grown, um, to, you know, in any significant way. I mean, I mean, we've been building houses all along. Uh, you know, uh, you know, I have apartments, I'm, I don't, I don't see a crazy. you know, uh, you know, I have apartments, I'm, I don't, I don't see a crazy demand, um, you know, I think adding a, you know, more makes, makes sense, you know, better housing, um, but what happens to the old stuff, you know, that, then that kind of diminishes the value of that, um. I, I think, I'm real nervous about, you know, the fact that, you know, you've got three or four, and I think another one on the way, I mean, close to probably a thousand apartments are gonna be, you know, added to the market in less than a year. I mean, there's, last time I checked, there's about between nine and ten thousand apartments total. That's over ten percent in a year, you know, that, that's kind of a fragile ecosystem. You know, I don't know what the ramifications of that are, but, um, you know, I know that they, you know, added money to the, to the investors to make it happen, you know? So again, you know, that, that, they're kind of, um, meddling with, with an ecosystem that's, you know, fragile, I, I mean, the one on Kerper, you know, they're outside investors that all that money is going out of the community. Uh, all the contractors were, with the exception, I think of McPurman Escavating, were outside the community, so none of that money is going back into the community, it's all going out, and you know, again, if that ultimately affects, you know, local, uh, business, I don't think that's good.
Chris, do you know of any local developers who wanted to develop in that space?
Well, I know there was a lot of talk about, um, well, you know, uh, you know, I, I listened to one of, one of the city council members talk about that there was a condo, uh, development that wanted to go in there, but, um, all, and it would have been nice, high-end, he said, and, but ultimately, he said it wouldn't have helped enough people. And I thought, well, I don't know, I, I grew up in that kind of housing, you know, I don't think, uh, you know, if it is low income, they haven't really said one way or another, I, I think it, you know, obviously is, but to me, you know, two hundred people under two roofs is, is not a great way to live. Um, you know, from what I heard, they're one bedroom, six hundred square foot one bedrooms, I mean, um, right next to the river, I mean, right next to railroad tracks, and I'm, I, I know a lot of people have expressed their concern about what that park's gonna look like down there by the river, uh, you know, the, the boats, the, the, the marina down there, I mean, there's just not a lot to do down there, um. And you know, in that same interview, they said, well, I'd be in favor of, you know, putting sidewalks in front of all the businesses, okay, whose cost? A- and you know, so now, so now the, the city or the business owners are paying for sidewalks for this outside investment group? Uh, you know, I don't see that as a big benefit.
So Chris, are you suggesting that, um, when you said that there's not a, a need for housing that, but yet these developments are going up, is, is that a city issue or an uninformed developer issue? Um, you know, because one would think that if somebody was coming from the outside, um, and investing, you know, a few million dollars on putting something up, that they would have done the studies on, on what the need is?
Well, from my understanding, they, they gave that group fifteen million dollars, I mean, so if it was a good investment, why do they need the fifteen million dollars?
And, and just to-
Would, would it have happened without the fifteen million, million dollars? I don't, I highly doubt it.
Um, I do know there's, for example, there's some local, uh, local builder developer who's building two now and up to five, uh, buildings on Cedar Cross Road. Um, so it would appear that there are local developers who feel that there's a need.
Yeah, I mean, and I'm familiar with that, uh, development too, I, I don't know if, uh, the, I think the, if he understood the ball was rolling on this other stuff, you know, maybe he didn't realize, or maybe it was too deep in by then, I don't know, I mean, uh, uh, yeah, I guess we'll see, I don't know either, you know, I'm, I'm just speculating, uh, uh, what I do know is, uh, you know, I don't see a huge demand, but I don't have a lot of turnover, you know, I have, have a long-term type tenants and, um, but when I do pull one up, I don't, I don't see a, an un, you know, insane demand and, and I also just think about it common sense-wise, you know, we don't have a, a huge influx in population, we don't have a big new business development or something like that, it's pulling in a lot of, you know, uh, new people, so, you know, where, where are these people living now? So, to me, it, like I said, it's a fragile ecosystem and, you know, uh, I don't know that another thousand apartments is not gonna have a ripple effect.
Chris, do you have thoughts about, uh, the issue of parking and the parking ramps, um, heard a lot about that recently? Uh, another one of those, uh, consultant situations where they, they got, they got feedback on, on what the city, uh, needs? Do, do you have a take on that, too much parking, not enough parking, that sort of thing?
Too much parking, I think that's, I think those are without saying, you know, you drive by them, there's three hundred empty spots-
In the ramps, you mean?
Yeah, in the ramps, um. Yeah, I mean, uh, it's kind of like apartments, that was, you know, a really vague, uh, goal, and so now we have all this massive amounts of extra parking, you know, things have changed so, so much even since COVID, you know, being in the restaurant industry. Prior to that, we had a lot of, you know, business lunches, uh, salespeople talking to people, uh, at lunch. That's really declined, you know, people just aren't doing business like that as much as they used to, which, which goes back to the airports. You know, it's, and, and I know that's kind of a, a symptom of government moves a little bit slower, but, you know, you just gotta be careful. And, and again, it, it kind of goes back to my other point of, you know, getting back to the basics first, why are we, you know, solving, you know, questionable, I think questionable problems when we have some real problems that need to be addressed, again, the sewers, the curbs, first responders, you know, parks, I mean, there's lots of areas that money could be spent that, that would last the test of time.
You mentioned, you talked, oh, go ahead.
Chris, you just, uh, we're, um, just thinking more broadly, uh, city council just came out with their, uh, strategic planning sessions, their list of top priorities, is there, are there any that, uh, you think, uh, shouldn't be on there, are there any that, uh, you think they missed out on, um, is there anything that you would have advocated for differently as far as those fifteen items?
Um, again, I think, you know, a lot of them don't seem like goals, they seem pretty vague, you know, they're like themes, kind of like affordable housing, what does that mean? I don't think, I don't think the, the director of housing knew what it meant, you know, does that mean a, a a cheaper home for somebody to buy, does that mean a cheaper place to rent, I mean, you know, these are kind of like themes, um. You know, I do, I think, uh, I think the sports complex idea seems like a great idea, I mean, I think that would bring travelers, I think that would be, um, beneficial to to locals, you know, having a, a complex like that, it seems to be, you know, uh, a very, uh, on-point target, um. Yeah, I don't know, is there any one in specifically you, you're curious about, or?
No, I was just more interested if there's any that you had your eye on.
Oh, no, I, I wouldn't say, I mean, like, again, I think, uh, they're, they're kind of vague, they don't, um, have a beginning or an end, or, um, you know, a real defined goal. I mean, some of them are just kind of, you know, buzzwordy.
Um, Chris, tell me a little bit more about, as you've been sort of preparing, uh, and doing your campaign, how you've been engaging with, uh, with, with voters, with constituents to find out what folks need, want, you know, and who you'd be representing?
Uh, well, you know, I'm going door to door, obviously, uh, you know, uh, talking to a lot of folks, kind of, you know, at the restaurant, I'm, I'm kind of easy to find, um, you know, a lot of people want change, you know, the, a lot of things that I'm talking about are, are kind of at the forefront for, for a lot of these folks, um. You know, one of, one of the main things is, uh, again, the infrastructure, the, the, uh, the streets, the, the, the sewer, the sidewalks, or I mean, the curbs, parks is a big one, um, you know, I think just cutting, being more responsible with money, I think, is, is huge, you know, everybody talks about growing our, our tax base, well, I mean, isn't being more responsible with the money we have just as important, if not more important? Like, being effective with the money we have, I think is more important, really, than, than we're not constantly in pursuit of more money. You know, if, if you can do more with what you have, aren't you better off? Ultimately, I, I mean, I'm not, I'm not suggesting we don't grow the tax base, but, you know, uh, I, I think doing better with what we have is, is way more obtainable in the short term.
Mm-hmm. And are you saying those things about, about infrastructure, that that's something you're hearing when you're door knocking?
Oh, definitely, definitely. Uh, definitely just being, being more responsible with, with money, um, you know, being treated with more respect, um, you know, those sorts of things, uh, got the, um, obviously, the first responders is, is a big one, um, you know, especially, you know, when I share my experiences of, of, of what I saw, you know, that, that upsets people, and it should. Um, you know, uh, yeah, uh, people are really, really excited for change, uh, you know, that's, that's the number one thing, uh, I hear, you know, that they're ready, they're ready for a fresh approach to, to business down there and, and, you know, I, I think I think it's, it's much needed.
Mm-hmm. Uh, Bobby, you wanna jump in with something?
No, I was just gonna see, um, if there were any other areas, Chris, that you had in mind that you feel that they should, uh, uh, cut from the budget or spend less money on?
Spend less money on? Yeah, I just think taking a really hard look at, at, you know, our staff, you know, where we have some overlap, where, where we have multiple people doing the same job, um, I think that, that would save some money, um. Uh, you know, you know, pet projects like the airport would save some money, um, you, you know, consultants right there would save you a ton of money, uh, just empowering your staff, you know, uh, finding out from them directly what the issues are, um, you know, making a better approach to, to the infrastructure, instead of putting patch on top of patch on top of patch, like, you know, come up with a better comprehensive plan that fixes the problem, you know, for the long term. You know, uh, it'd be, it'll be expensive in the beginning, but it'll save you money in the end.
Chris, I don't know if we talked about this at the beginning, but have you ta- I, I don't know if you remember, maybe I missed it, have you, um, served in, uh, either an elected office or appointed office, or is this a first-time thing for you?
Oh, definitely a first-time thing, I'm the furthest thing from a politician, you know, um, yeah, I mean, uh, no, this, this would definitely be a first-time thing, you know, the Copper Kettle was a first-time thing, uh, my, my dent company was a first-time thing. Um, but, you know, I don't, you know, when I get into something, I go all in.
And, and to that point, do you, how, how do you kind of keep up with what's going on in the city and, and, uh, on city council and some of the decisions they're making in the background, you know, some of that detail?
You know, I, I watch online. Some, you know, I, I have to go down there, obviously, for, you know, uh, you know, throughout the years for all different stuff with the restaurant, for the parking lot, for, you know, I, I've had quite a bit of interaction that way, um. Yeah, I mean, uh, mainly, you know, I watch online.
Okay, uh, Chris, is there anything else that we, we haven't, uh, brought up today that, that you'd like to mention before we let you go?
Well, I don't think so, I mean, you know, again, my, my perspective is, uh, you know, um, just get back to basics, uh, to, you know, just a fresh approach to the way we're, we're doing things down there. Um, you know, get rid of the politics, you know, make, make the residents the customer, you know, and, and focus on customer service, uh, you know, push back on, on challenge, you, you know, uh, push back to power a little bit, challenge, challenge, you know, why things are the way they are. Um, you know, I'm, I'm not down there to protect the staff's quo, I'm, I'm down there to protect the taxpayer and, and our, and our dollar. You know, I'm, I'm the type of person that's gonna treat the tax dollar like it's my own dollar, and, you know, uh, yeah, I would say that would be mostly my message.
Okay. Well, we appreciate your time and thanks for meeting with us today and, uh, for putting yourself out there for elective office, and good luck with the rest of your campaign.
Well, thank you so much, appreciate it, have a good day, guys.
You too.
Bye.